...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much for showing up tonight on this nice warm... we don't have many of these yet, so I appreciate you taking the time out to come here. My name is Maria Sando. This is the Board of Larkin Township, for those of you who don't know. Tonight we have some guests who will be... we're going to conduct a little bit of business first, and then the guests will come up here and we'll talk about the drainage. So, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct business of the township. We're going to have roll call first, please. Lisa?
Todd?
Here.
Karen?
Yes.
Jill?
Here.
Maria?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Okay, we're all accounted for. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We just have to correct the minutes date to the 14th instead of the 13th.
Okay. Any other changes? I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda with those changes.
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion by Todd, supported by Karen, to accept the agenda with the changes noted. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Motion carried. Thanks, Lisa. All right, do we have any correspondence?
No.
All right. Before I start public comment, I've just got to do a little bit of housekeeping. There's some emergency exits. You'll see the exit signs. There's some behind you, there's one here, there's one through the kitchen, but I believe that's locked. There's also restrooms out in the lobby to your right. As you leave this room, you go out to the right, there's a drinking fountain out there as well. An emergency, please all proceed to whatever door we can get out of and meet with the emergency personnel. They will give you the directions on how to proceed from there. Okay? Any questions?
Just kitchen doors.
The kitchen door is open, okay. The kitchen door is open, we could go through there. Okay. Good to know.
Not the middle door, because it's open.
Not the middle door, because that's a bunch of chairs. You don't want to go in there.
That could help.
Yeah. And excuse our housekeeping, we're remodeling over here to try to give this old structure that was built in the 1970s a little bit of life. So, we're giving it a good paint job and uplifting it, giving it a facelift after a little while. All right? All right, is there any public comment? And what I'm looking for is if you're... if there's something on the agenda, you can speak during the agenda, during the time that we're there, but if you have something that's not related to the agenda and would like to speak now, please stand, state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes to talk. Do we have any public comment? All right, hearing none, I will close public comment. All right, the first thing on the agenda is the ordinance granting Consumers Energy and its successors and assigns the right and authority to construct, maintain, and commercially use electric lines. You can read the rest. In the Charter Township of Larkin Township, for a period of 30 years. We did introduce this at one meeting, we put it out at another meeting, it did not get published correctly, so we're reintroducing it to get re...
Yeah, Andy had... our attorney had to publish it in the paper, so now we're just re-voting it.
We're approving it.
Re-voting.
Okay, because it has now been a publication, the paper has corrected. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Support.
All right, motion by Lisa, supported by Todd, to accept the Consumers Energy Electrical Franchise Ordinance as written. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jill?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, Lisa, you've got some park improvements you want to talk about?
This is a continuation of our...
Come here, you can use this.
I can be loud, but that's only when my kids are here and I can yell. Okay, so this is a continuation of our conversation about the mulch at the... under the playgrounds, at the play areas at the park. So, last time I was asked to get more information, and I have, and that is in your packet of information here for you. And we can't use our iPads because the power's not very good, or that Wi-Fi is not very good over here. So what I've done is I have... I've contacted three companies. Let me run over this from there. I contacted... well, first off, I contacted for the mulch from Midland Mulch and Salzburg Landscaping and Stavinsky Saad. Salzburg and Midland Mulch will not put the mulch in or take it out. Sorry. But, so I had to contact a third-party contractor for that, and they both referred me to someone. So the first company is E&amp;M Property Maintenance, and they gave me two quotes. Because it's a small playground, they said we wouldn't necessarily have to pull up all the mulch and start fresh, we could just fix where the ripped... we wouldn't take out both, either one of them, actually. We would just pull out where it's ripped and kind of cover it up and take out the old mulch. And that quote was $5,372 to take it out and put in a new six to seven inches of new mulch. To take everything out, it would be $9,020. However, this quote included mulch from Midland Mulch, who does not use playground-safe mulch, so we don't want to use that. So, we could have the same person do it, and we could purchase the mulch from Salzburg Landscaping, because that playground mulch is safe. So they could deliver 280 yards for $5,760, and then E&amp;M Property Maintenance would charge us $45,40 to remove all the old mulch and barriers, and that would give us a total of $10,300. And he would make sure to use vehicles with rubber tires to minimize damage on the asphalt. KP Sales would remove all the mulch and barriers and replace with 12 inches of playground surfacing, AKA mulch, for $27,100. Their bid said they will take precautions not to damage the asphalt, but they're not responsible for any damage. E&amp;M said the same, but they did say they would use rubber tires to make sure it would do the minimal amount of work. And Stavinsky Saad would do the same, remove the mulch and weed barrier, replace it with eight to 10 inches of playground mulch, and it would be $45,000. So those are our two choices, since we decided last time we wanted to go with wood mulch instead of the rubber. And I had planned to get this to you Friday, but I was still making phone calls today to follow up. Everybody's too busy to... so if you have any questions.
Okay, Board, do you have any questions for Lisa?
I will say we have to do something because it's not safe over there right now. There's too much weed block hanging, sticking up. I wouldn't want any kids to play over there right now.
Well, the weed barrier alone is a trip hazard because it's showing through the mulch.
Yeah, and I have pictures. I sent Ruth over to take some photos for me, so if anybody wants to see them, I can show you.
Okay.
Well, Lisa, you've been working on this. Do you feel E&amp;M is adequate?
I do. I actually... I did. I actually called... he was referred to me by Midland Mulch. And I called him today and said, you know, are you sure that you're giving me a good quote because you're significantly lower than the others? And I wanted to make sure that I would... I didn't... I wasn't giving him a benefit, I was asking him to make sure he was doing what I asked him to do. And he assured me that he was, and that he was giving us a fair price because he didn't want to be taking advantage of us, is what he told me. Because at first I thought he didn't include the price of mulch, because then I'm like, well, if you add in mulch, then it's about the right number, but that was not true, so...
All right, Board, what would you like to do?
Lisa, have you talked... is there equipment small, it's not big that's going to rip up that?
He would rent a Bobcat to use, so that's part of his... on his proposal, he has to rent some equipment that's more user-friendly for our area. So he would use a Bobcat with the... and again, he said he would use the rubber tires, he wouldn't use big, heavy equipment, he would use smaller. I did ask that question.
Okay, thanks.
And Stavinsky would use like golf, what they use at the golf course, which is probably part of the reason it's a lot more, is it's smaller mini-trips.
Yeah.
And it's pretty labor-intensive to do this, because they've got to dig under the slides and under the, you know, stairs and stuff like that.
Hopefully they use good discretion and not do it when it's wet?
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's waiting. I ask about the volleyball pit and the baseball fields, and they're all waiting till it's a little bit drier, so they're all cognizant of that.
It's a lot of money, but we do need to do something.
Do you agree with E&amp;M?
Is that a motion, Dan?
Yes, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, we go with E&amp;M to replace it.
Support. All right, motion by Dan Owens, supported by Karen, to use E&amp;M Property Maintenance to replace the weed barrier and the mulch in the two playground areas. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, phase two of this is the lawn care. Last year, the last two years, we had a company and everybody had a lot of issues, so I've gone out and got a few more bids. Most people don't want it because it's too much. We have a huge amount because we've expanded back on the park behind us. So, I have two. One is from Reader Landscaping, and one is from White Pine Lawn and Snow. Ironically, White Pine Lawn and Snow merged with our old lawn guy, so they're working together. The bids are fairly comparable. Reader, just a tiny bit smaller area at the park, because I didn't include the very far back baseball diamonds, and the White Pine did include, not the diamonds themselves, but the area around it. So, I have made sure that they cover the areas that were a problem for the parking lots, the fence line, and the playgrounds. So, as you can see, the Reader's bid includes a certain... five times of treating the parking lot, and three times doing the fence line and playgrounds. Hopefully with the new playgrounds, we won't have to worry about that anymore. But if they have to come back more than that, it's $700 a treatment for the parking lots, $1,800 for the fence line and playground. And I also made sure to point out that the rock garden weeds can't be taller than the shrubs, like they were back when we had TruGreen here. They were all... certainly would take care of that. And they'll also spray around the fire department where the weeds grow on the sides.
So Lisa, you've been working with them. Is your recommendation Reader Landscaping?
I think they both did fine. I mean, they're both very... they were very open to whatever I asked them about what to do, and they followed up with questions every time I had one, because I wanted to make sure I was comparing apples to apples. So, I think we got a quote from Reader a few years ago, and they were quite a bit more then, so I don't... I feel like they were... I was out when we voted on that, but as I recall, I think they were a little bit more, but maybe not. But given how much chemicals are, these prices are not higher than they were two years ago when we first did the contract, so it's pretty fair.
Okay. All right, Board?
I make a motion that we go with Reader.
Support.
All right. Motion by Karen, supported by Dan, to accept Reader Landscaping. Quote for parking lot treatment, lawn treatment, and fence and playground area treatment. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lisa, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Do you have anything else?
No, I'm going to let you do this personal, but I do need Shannon's number if we have to... Did you get it from me?
No.
Here. I have one on her bid, but I think that's her office. Sorry, I'm out of my element today over here. Oop, where'd it go? Shannon Kilinger? Okay, I just hit that. There's the info.
All right, we have an offer... we have three parcels for sale on the corner of Seibert and Jefferson. We do have an offer that... to purchase Lot B, which is the farthest south lot on that property, which is right there on Jefferson. Okay? You guys have the...
That might not be in the packet, but it was in the email.
Oh, you didn't?
I brought another copy of it, I have it right here.
Okay.
Because everybody got this like two weeks... a week ago, so I could have a good chance to get it.
Has everyone had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Okay. What questions, comments do you have about it?
Just confirming that it does come with a water tap, this particular parcel.
This parcel does come with a water tap. The middle parcel does not.
The end parcel does.
The end parcel does, yes.
So this one doesn't include a water tap?
This does include a water tap. The sale price that they're offering is $59,000. By the time we pay title insurance and the brokerage fee, it works out to be $54,170 that we will be taking in for that property. As you saw from the email that Shannon, our Realtor, sent, is that she's recommending that we add to this, that the seller is tax-exempt, there's no tax proration, buyers to commence paying taxes in full beginning July 2023, all future billings thereafter, the city water assessment has been paid in full, and the buyers may tap into city water, seller is not aware of any special assessments at this time, buyers to assume future assessments after closing. No parcel divisions included. Is there any other comments? Nothing? All right, how do you feel about that price?
I make a motion that we accept this offer with the conditions that you just reiterated there.
I'll second it.
Okay. Jill already beat you to it. All right, motion by Todd, support by Jill, to accept the offer as written, and with the contingencies that we stated, that our Realtors stated on here. Okay? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Maria?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
You said yes. Jill?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Should I go ahead and text her?
Go ahead and text her. They're really anxious, she asked that we text her during this meeting because they're anxious to get their builder there tomorrow, literally tomorrow, so, to look at it. Okay, so Lisa's going to text. All right. Now, we're ready to talk about drains that I'm sure you all came for, so our little bit of business is done. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Joe Sova and Spicer Engineering. And the first thing I want to say, though, is thank you all for coming to this meeting. When I was elected in 2018, I know, 2016, wasn't it? 2016. 2016, yeah. Time flies when you're having fun. The... one of the biggest things that people were asking me about was drainage, because Larkin Township is notoriously wet. And people were coming to me and saying, you know, can't we just please do something? Can't we just dig the drains? Can't we do something? So we've done studies. The township has actually put two studies... we worked with the Midland County Road Commission to actually do studies and say, we know there's a problem, but what is the problem? Well, when we did that study, we found out that the drains are pretty willy-nilly. They're flowing into each other. As a lot of you know, some of you have pools of water in your ditches in front of your houses. Some of the cattails are taller than, you can't see out. They're like a hedge around your house, that kind of thing. Woodland Estates especially, the road commission thought that they were going to help, and they went through and cut down all the cattails, and it ended up just clogging up the drains. So that was not a good solution to that. So now we've actually put together a study, we've handed it over to the specialists, so I ask that you please respect these specialists, because they're doing what we asked them to do. And ask your questions now, this is the time, okay? So I appreciate everything that you're... that you... all the respect that you will give them ahead of time. So Joe, it's up to you.
Can I just add that we are recording it, so for people who aren't here, figure out how to get it on Facebook, so that people at home can watch it later.
All right, if you didn't hear that, we are recording this, so that we can put it on Facebook, or YouTube, or something like that, so that people who are not here will be able to see it in the future, okay? Joe, do you have your... do you need this, or you have your own mic?
Is this mic hot? Okay, Bill. Oh, that's okay. I'm just going to introduce the folks that came with me. My name is Joe Sova, I'm the Midland County Drain Commissioner.
Do you mind if we sit in the audience and listen to your presentation?
You go right ahead.
Okay, you guys can have all of this, yeah.
I'll send you over.
And as Supervisor Sando indicated, there's been longstanding drainage issues in this area, and we had to wait for the Waldo inter-county drain to get completed before any of this water that we... if we make improvements, it has a place to go. And so that was done, and now we have a place for the water to go, so now we're looking at options to drain your subdivisions a little bit better. But tonight, there is six petitions, really, that Larkin has brought to us, two of which are to establish a new drain that isn't currently a drain. And then four... what was that?
His golf pictures.
Oh. And four of the petitions are for improvements to existing. Tonight's meeting, at least from our perspective, is primarily focused on the two Chapter Threes to establish a new drainage district, and that's the Woodland Estates drain and the Johns drain. Once we complete that, and we have an action item on those, then we can talk a little bit about the Chapter Eights, which would be the Ken's Lane, Maryland's Lane, Cedar Ridge drain, and the Whispering Pines of the Plus. Those are not as far along as these other two drains that we're here to talk about. So, if we can, we're going to... we'll have question and an opportunity for you to discuss the Woodland Estates drain and the Johns drain when we're done with the presentation, but once we're done with that action, then we'll get into an overview of where we're at with the Chapter Eights, if you will. And tonight with me, I have my Deputy Drain Commissioner Norma Stewart, engineer representing Spicer Group here, Dave Valier, Spicer Group, and our attorney on the drainage district is Stacy Hassan. And so we'll let Dave take it away. He is ready to rock.
Okay, good evening, everybody. As Joe mentioned, my name is Dave Valier, I work for Spicer Group, and we're working for Joe on this. And right now, I'm project manager on the Woodland Estates and Johns Lane drains project. So, we did the introductions, we'll give a little background on the two drains that we're looking at here tonight, the engineering study, and the next steps to move forward. So, in August of 2022, Larkin Township held some meetings because of a significant large storm event in 2017. There was a lot of significant flooding in the township. The township coordinated with the Drain Commissioner for drainage improvements. The Waldo inter-county drain was identified as an outlet for many of the flooded areas. There was a project on the Waldo inter-county drain, which is near complete. There's one culvert left to be put in yet, and some additional restoration that needs to happen. But I have heard tonight that a lot of the drainage issues that some people were having have improved significantly since the Waldo drain has been cleaned out. Drainage concerns still exist, though, in Woodland Estates, Waschkiewicz subdivision, Whispering Pines subdivision. So there was a petition to establish a new county drain, which is a Chapter 3/4 process in the Michigan Drain Code. And that's... those two drains are Woodland Estates and Johns drain, Johns Lane drain. The improvement of the existing county drains, which are Chapter 8 drains, those include Ken's Lane, Maryland's Lane, Cedar Ridge, and Whispering Pines. Branch 2 of the Plus drain. August 9th, 2022, an application was filed with the Midland County Drain Commissioner to lay out and designate the drainage districts for Woodland Estates and Johns drain. And there was also a treasurer's certificate that was received. So the engineering study, what Spicer was tasked to do was determine the watershed for each drain, the Johns Lane drain and the Wask... or the Woodland Estates drain, determine the preliminary drain routes for each one of those drains, and prepare planning level So what is a drainage district? A drainage district is a boundary line that designates water that contributes to a drain. So when it rains, the water flows towards the drain, that's considered in the drainage district, the surface flow. Or if it gets into a pipe system and goes into the drain, that... any water that goes into the drain. So how do we determine that district? We look at detailed contour maps, one-foot contours, and we trace out the district line based on those contours. We go out in the field with that preliminary map, we look at the existing infrastructure that's out there in the field, and look at the drainage patterns in the field to determine that line. So the Woodland Estates drainage district includes Larkin Township, Midland County, 136 parcels, and 220 acres. And that's... this map here delineates the Woodland Estates drainage district. So anything within that... within that black dash line is considered a drain into one of these flow paths that we've designated, that we'll see on the next slide. So, so we... the flow paths on the Woodland Estates drain, there's six different outlets, and these are numbered at the top of the page here. So you've got one, two, three, four, five, and six. And those are color-coded, so you can see where the water's going. So this blue dash line, and I don't know if you can see that very good, but this is the Waldo inter-county, and it goes across the road and it goes down this way. So all of the Woodland Estates drains, those six outlets end up going into the Waldo inter-county drain. So outlet number one, this... these lines in black, the ditches along the roadside, they go out and enter into the Waldo drain here. So just a short distance for those, for that first outlet. Outlet number two, there's a large drainage ditch in the rear lots of the subdivision that come down. These areas here drain down, this drains over, cuts across the road, and gets into here, and goes out. The upper end of that system, this orange line here, all of this drainage comes around this way, this goes this way, and it all gets into that. So that orange area is outlet number two. Outlet number three is this area on the west side of... I can't see the road name right now, but Deer Valley. That goes out into outlet number three. Outlet number four is the other side of the road that comes out and outlets into the Waldo drain there. Outlet number five, all of this yellow goes here, ends up coming out this way. Now, this... let me point out that these blue marks in here, those are existing cross culverts. The red are proposed cross culverts. So if there ends up being a project on Woodland Estates, we would add some cross culverts across the road to help out the drainage in the area. So everything on the yellow, then, would go down, come down, go underneath this cross culvert this way, this side of the road here, they'd come around in outlet. This gets down into here and crosses over, and then goes into the Waldo drain there. And then everything in the red makes its way either across through this large drainage ditch, or out this way where it goes through the culvert, and they all end up going out across the road here. So that's the flow paths. So that's the flow paths that we've delineated to date so far on the Woodland Estates Drain. Johns Lane Drainage District includes Larkin Township and Midland County. There's 25 parcels in the district, and it's approximately 13 acres in land area. So this is Johns Lane. This is Swede Road down here, and this is Waschkiewicz Lane. And so the drainage district, anything inside the line here ends up going out and outletting into the Waldo drain down in here. Now, everything else that's outside of that line finds its way into the Waldo drain, but it does not access the ditches alongside the road on Johns Lane. So, same picture, except with the ditches shown on the side. So you've got a ditch on the north side of the road, and a ditch on the south side of the road that takes the water down into the Waldo. So this side, the south side, goes down here, goes underneath the culvert, and goes out this way. That goes out that way. So the other portion of our study included to provide a cost estimate. So this is a pretty, you know, inclusive cost estimate. So if we were to do a project out here, you would have site clearing that would need to happen, open channel excavation, hauling of spoils, culvert replacements, driveway repairs, road repairs, sump line repairs, erosion control, traffic control, survey engineering and design, construction administration, staking and inspection, easement preparation and acquisition, permitting, financing, and contingencies. So, the estimate for the Woodland Estates Drain is $3 million, plus or minus. Now that estimate, because we haven't done a deep dive into the project, because it is not, right now, we haven't been tasked to do a preliminary design on it, but that includes, like, that would include replacement of every culvert in the district. So every driveway culvert, every cross culvert, that would be included in that cost. And that is just culvert replacement, that is not, that is not a storm sewer. So all your ditches would still be there, they'd be cleaned out, they'd be put on grade, and make a positive flow through there. Okay, so right now, that is what this estimate would include. Would not include catch basins, you know, a fully enclosed storm sewer system. Johns Lane, same thing, you've got pretty much everything there. The one thing that's in the, the one thing that's in Woodland Estates that isn't needed on Johns Lane is easements. Okay, and I'll go back to that in a minute. But so everything, everything that was in Woodland Estates is on this slide, except the easements. And the cost for Johns Lane repairs is estimated to be $328,000. Now, when I say easements, I'll just go back to this map real quick. Any of the parcels that back up to this rear lot drain and this rear lot drain, or the drains that come through this way and across here, would require us to get an easement from that landowner for right-of-way to maintain the drain in the future. So that's one of the things that would have to happen to, the rest of the, the rest of the lines are within the road right-of-way, so there would be no additional easement needed. Okay? So what are the next steps? So, we need a petition to locate and establish a drain. If that petition is filed, then there would be a board of determination. That consists of a board of three disinterested, disinterested board members that live outside the established drainage district. The board members would listen to testimony from landowners living in the district. And then the board members would list, after listening to the testimony, they would determine if a project was necessary or not. So, is there any questions?
What are the options if one landowner would not give an easement? Stacy, you want to add to that?
So, the Drain Com, if we're to the point where we need easements, under the Drain Code, you have to have a permanent easement by everyone traversed by the drain if it's not in road right-of-way. And if we could not come to a resolution with that property owner, the Drain Commissioner has the right to use condemnation powers to do that? If we, we don't want to, if we don't have to, but that is available.
You didn't mention moving the water line for people to have installed, deepening the ditch in your estimate.
Pardon me?
We all, when we had the water put in, and all, all of Johns and Ken's and Maryland's were regrated at that time by the township's approved contractors, water lines were put under the ditches, only in about two-foot depth. Who moves the water lines if you didn't have those listed on your estimates?
Well, we haven't determined that that's necessary yet. If the project moves forward, we look at that issue and, and see what the options are then. But there's currently ditches over the existing water lines now. So we would expect that the water line would stay in place. But it's something we haven't really taken a hard look at yet.
So, you're not deepening it?
We don't know that for sure yet. There may be some deepening, we don't know that yet. We haven't gotten that far, we haven't been tasked with doing a preliminary design yet.
What happens with the ditches that are culverts?
What do you mean?
They're enclosed.
Oh, that where they've put pipe through their ditch and filled it in and growed lawn over it?
Yeah, where the city's got lawn, or the township did a lot of water, and it's all, yeah.
So that would, they would be put back in kind the way they are now. I mean, they would be laid to the right grade, so the drainage would work. But they would still, that, those portions would not be returned to open ditches.
Go ahead.
Yeah, maybe this is a question for afterwards. But if one of my houses, Woodland Estates, is a 10-inch OD drain, six foot below the road, that goes 200 yards to the east. I don't know if it goes under the roadway itself, or just on the side, or why, but it goes on about four, about five driveways. You know if that's looked at being replaced on that drain with something larger to take the cleanings out?
Yeah. Yeah, we've done some preliminary sizing right now, and, but yeah, if it, if it needs to be upsized, what we do is we look at sizing for the 10-year storm event. So that's what the pipe sizes would be.
I think the gold commission has a criteria of like 16-inch minimum or something like that?
15.
15?
Yes.
So if it's failing, you probably would be upsizing it independent of the storm?
Oh, yeah, 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 there's, there wouldn't be anything 10 inches.
Well, yeah, it's existing, so it, it looks kinda hard to get to, is my concern.
Yeah, no, we'd, we'd be upsizing that culvert for sure.
My name is Dick Cassidy, not that that matters. I've lived at 3833 East Johns Lane for 54 years. I bought there when the road was sand, I wasn't settled yet. And I've never, in all the years, had an issue with any graining on Johns Lane. I look at all the ditches. I go out in the spring and clean in front of people's culverts. Just on my own, just do it, be helpful, nothing, needs to be done. But, I've never had an issue with water standing, and I'm on the 3833, so I'm on the western edge of where that drain starts on the north side of the road. So you're familiar with that. And this year, or last year, we had a culvert put in down the roadways, and I don't know who did it, or how quick it was put in, but it wasn't supervised properly. In the culvert, okay, here's a level, here's the road, nice and level. Here's the culvert, starting here, water flowing this way, here's the culvert. Not quite that, to that extreme, but it's very evident. If you drive down there, look on the left side of the road, you'll see it. So, there's not anything wet up here, but down here, it's, so it's holding some water back, still not a big issue. But there's just a couple of things, I can take you through it. I have my engineers had it home, I won't take it, and will, will see that, that in all those years, that road at least, and Ken's Lane too, I don't think is real bad. But when the roads were built back in the Huckleberry Marsh, which is normally lowland?
Yes.
Well, now there are Huckleberry Bridges when you go back, 'cause the roads are, there was a problem. So, I just wanted to tell you.
Yes, and we, we, we welcome that input. When we do, if this project moves forward into designs for improvements, we would, we welcome any type of comments that we get from landowners that have lived there their whole life.
Try not to punish the people that have lived there for years and years.
Oh, I'm not punishing them.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not fighting fault. But, but go back, maybe where the problem is, if you have to maybe lower the Waldo drain another four feet to go to make up the level. But, but get the, get the water so it's smooth, but it's hard to make water go this way.
Sure it is.
And if you go back, and if you wanna come out to my house, I'll take you for a ride, and I'll show you exactly what I'm talking about, and you'll say, you're having to get tired of doing this. I'm sorry, but.
No, that's fine.
So what I think it's important to know for the township board and for the community is, right now, what the Drain Commissioner has been asked to do is complete, and there's no more for him to do on these two drains. Unless there is a petition filed. So, we got an application to locate and establish a drainage district. There was an order locating and establishing a drainage district. That doesn't mean there's a project. That's step one. Nothing else happens unless there's step two, which needs to be initiated either by property owners or the township, which is the next-up petition to locate and establish a drain.
One more quick question, just a thought. I'm a single taxpayer, right, landowner? But I do have three parcels, I bought it, so I'd have privacy, empty lot, house, empty lot. I'm not gonna have to pay on three separate acres I withhold, which is a big chunk of whatever you're...
So, so great question, did everybody understand the question? Okay, so, I'm a lawyer, so I'm just gonna say it depends, 'cause that's what we do.
You're a lawyer?
Yes, yes, and so, under the statute, it's based on benefits derived. So, this is not gonna be complete, it's gonna be based on acreage, land use, the number of parcels, where work takes place, where you're located in the watershed. There are a number of different factors that go into putting together a special assessment district for what each, so will you pay for every part of the property you own that's in the drainage district? Yes, if all of your parcel is not in the drainage district, you're only paying for that portion, that acreage is, that is within it. But we do look at per parcel, and we do look at acreage. So yes, but they're not necessarily equal.
Okay.
But again, there's no assessments on this now, because there's no petition. I got a smile on him for the first time.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm open to what you were just saying.
Yes.
Woodland Estates Drain. Looking at the map you just put up, part of that outline...
About Woodland Estates out there?
Woodland Estates, part of that area is now chemical property. I assume that because they get less benefit out of that, even though that's significant acreage?
Is that this, or?
Yeah, and now there's now Kevin. There probably would be a lower rate per acre for that than...
So, I think it's too early to determine that right now. Acreage is a factor, and they own a lot of acreage in the district. So that's a factor, it's actually the largest factor in an assessment district. But we also have a number of different factors, depending on the type of work that needs to be performed, et cetera. So it's very, very premature to say who's gonna be, is A gonna be paying more than B? But acreage is the number one factor.
Acre, but then you said land use, and then the amount of work?
Well, and the location of the work, there's a number, so an assessment like, a district like this might have eight different factors that go into methodology, as an example.
Anybody else?
How many parcels did you say in this?
In that?
In here?
Yeah.
136.
Can you just outline the roads on this one? You did it on Johns Lane, but you didn't really go through them.
Yeah, so this is, um... So this is Monroe, right here, this is Monroe. And I have to get up closer to my computer, 'cause I can't see that screen very well. Can't see that very good here. I don't know, maybe someone in the audience can help me out here. So that road?
That's Woodland Estates.
Woodland Estates.
Yeah.
Deer Valley, I believe this is.
Deer Valley.
This is Old Pine, I believe.
They'll leave Deer Valley.
This is still Deer Valley?
Yeah, it comes all down, that's Old Pine down there.
This is Old Pine.
Yeah. Goes around to there, down North Trail going north.
North Trail.
And then Spring Hill on the left going out, and then the yellow up there, I think it's Quail Run.
Quail Run, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does Waldo run right here, that drain that goes north south?
Waldo, Waldo drain is here. So this is the upper end of the Waldo, this branch of Waldo.
The road, Waldo Road.
Waldo Road's down this way, farther, yeah.
Thank you.
A clarification on the districts themselves, if you, if you suck drains into the ditch, does that mean you're in the district, or if it's not in the district automatically?
Yes, if, if, uh, Nick, maybe you can help me out with that one.
I think it...
If you have a suck pump that goes into the ditch, you'd be considered in the district, I believe.
Then you'd be in two districts, it'd be assessed for two separate districts.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so if you have a parcel that's split between two neighboring districts, for example, you have two county drains that are close in proximity to each other. Like Johns and Ken's, a good example. You know, you may have a backyard in one drain and a front yard in the other. And if you have one acre as an entire piece of property, you may get assessed for three-quarters of an acre going to one, and a quarter of an acre going to another. So, you know, you wouldn't be paying your full acre in both districts, it would be split proportionally according to the drain that it contributes to. But if you have stormwater that is, you know, ponding in your yard, and then eventually starts to flow towards the drain, once the ponding, you know, builds up, you would be in the drain that it would flow towards. So if you pump your water from a pond to a drain, or pump your water from your basement to your drain, then you would be in the drain because you're contributing stormwater. So if that ditch functions, you benefit from it functioning, so you're part of the district.
But, but I think it's important, everybody that we're talking about tonight is already in the Waldo inter-county. So by having these districts, you're already gonna be in two, and if you're lucky that you're in the split, then you might be in three.
So you get taxed for Waldo and then the...
Yes, and that, what, I meant lucky like you're in, you're gonna get three different light items. So that is not unusual throughout the state of Michigan. Because a tributary, if it's established separately from the main drain, then you're in two districts, but this district only pays for costs associated with the work in here. So, as an example, I was in Calhoun County the other day, and there was a property owner in six different drainage districts with one parcel. It, it, it depends on the tributaries.
My assessment for the Waldo drain is based on how far we were from the outlet. Are these drains similar, where do these three... Are these drains, where do these drains get paid for that part of the assessment?
Okay, so that would maybe, maybe, not necessarily a definitive, a factor in an assessment. Proximity to the drain or length of use of the drain may be a factor in the assessment, but the Waldo is a much longer drain than this, and this is more condensed, so that may not be a factor that makes sense to utilize for this drainage district. We don't know yet, we're not to that part of the process. But a good question.
Anything else?
Yeah, so with respect to Woodland Estates, um, I'm a new, relatively new homeowner there, but my understanding is that it was established in the eighties. At that time, the Land Division Act of nineteen sixty-seven applied, and it looks like it required the Drain Commissioner or the Township to first, the developer, to provide for adequate stormwater facilities, and to establish at his or her expense, accounting or intercounty drain, if deemed necessary, to ensure adequate maintenance of stormwater outlet facilities. Why would that happen?
So, under the Land Division Act, unless you want to try this one?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Under the Land Division Act, the township and the Drain Office are required to approve a plat, and the Drain Commissioner specifically to review drainage. And it may allow the Drain Commissioner to require in certain circumstances that the drain be established as a county drain. In the nineteen eighties, across the state of Michigan, that did not happen where it became a county drain. After communities got more educated about the need for a public drainage system, then more and more, as new plats came up, and Midland County probably starting in the nineties, early two thousands, more close to the early two thousands, then the Drain Commissioner's office started requiring that many of these plats be established as county drains. So, older plats, whether you go to Saginaw County, Bay County, Midland County, are going to have plats that have what I call orphan drains, that no entity, especially if it's outside the road right of way, has any responsibility for it since the developer left. And so, this is a situation where you have what I'll call an orphan drain, that no one, no governmental entity is responsible for the drainage for that community, and I think that's why Larkin Township has taken the steps to, to initiate the process, to provide some jurisdiction to the Drain Office so that they can be maintained.
Are you saying that at the time, the Drain Commissioner or the Township concluded that the drains was adequate?
Yeah.
Or did they just, or...
So, at the, in the nineteen eighties, based on nineteen eighties standards, in order for the plat to be approved, the Drain Commissioner reviewed the outlet, and remember, that's not where people put houses, et cetera, how they graded their roads, maintenance over the last forty years. At the time, based on the design from the developer, the drainage outlet was adequate. Yes, that's why they signed the plat.
Well, and you can see, there's six different outlets that this, that this subdivision drains to now. So, there is adequate.
There's probably platted in more than one piece at a time, yes.
I mean, I think at a prior, the Township suggested that they, that they had basically made a mistake in not forcing the developers to create a drainage district.
So, I would have to look, I'm assuming this is more than one plat, I'm not familiar with, I apologize, I'm not as familiar with the extents, but i, if it was in the nineteen eighties, it would be very unusual for, based on my review of what took place in the nineteen eighties in terms of subdivisions, for it to be automatically established as a drain once it was immediately constructed. My review of drains in this county and many neighboring counties, that, that did not happen. So, if it was the roads, if the drainage was in the road right of way, then the Road Commission took care of it for road purposes, but other than that, it was not under anyone's jurisdiction. That, so, I, I don't know what discussion was before about any mistakes taking place, but the way, if it was in nineteen eighty, this was a commonplace way to administer it.
My, Ed, here's a question here. About ten years ago, I heard something to the effect that there was some paperwork that was done in the eighties to incorporate it in the county drain condition, that the paperwork was going to be finished by, uh, finance. And it just seems like the current homeowners are being saddled with the cost of something that should have been taken care of in the eighties according to the law that applied at the time.
So, the law that applied at the time does, allows for an approval, but not, does not necessarily mandate that it becomes a county drain, that was often not the case, and, and so now, or anytime since nineteen eighty, this is the process to move that forward, and unfortunately, you know, in the case of any, what I'll call an orphan drain, the property owners who are here, who have the opportunity to petition, yes.
Well, and the thing is too, that if, if this was established as a county drain back in the eighties, and, and if the drain is in the condition it is now, where there's people having problems and it needs a project, the petition would be filed, and the landowners would still pay, anybody inside that black line is the ones who pay for the improvements, along with the Township and the county. So, you know, it, it still would have been the same, you wouldn't ever get out of paying on a county drain.
I mean, it's a fair point, but it's not just the establishment of the drains, it's the requirement to provide adequate stormwater facilities. I mean, it just seems like, it's not an issue that the, the adequate facilities have degraded, it's just they were never adequate. I mean, looking at that, and it's such a mess.
But it doesn't matter, we can't go back to the nineteen eighties, what's done is done, we gotta work, we gotta not.
Correct, correct.
I think that I heard that the Waldo is not yet complete?
If, if, all the excavation is done, there's one culvert that needs to be put in yet, and there's going to be some restoration.
So, why are we not waiting to see if that alleviates the problems that we're having? If, if everything runs there and that was a problem?
The problem is, in these areas, is the water can't get to the Waldo, to get with it. The Waldo is ready to receive the water, but it can't get there out of these subdivisions, because the drainage is insufficient.
But, like they said, we haven't had these problems in, if you're looking at the two thousand seventeen, that was a problem everywhere, not just here. Well, right, we didn't, we didn't get a problem. So, I, I'm kind of confused that.
Well, and like Stacy mentioned earlier, there is no project at this point. It is now a county drain. It is a county drain, but a petition has not been filed.
There's a county district, there's a district.
There's a drainage district, but not a drain.
A drainage district, yes. Okay, go ahead.
Right, and so, I, I think what, why this project was brought to this is that in order, from my understanding, is that there is not sufficient culvert size and things to get the water there in the first place. If, if this community and the township says, let's wait and see, and you get, till we get flooded again, and then we'll come back and we'll start this process again, the paperwork was initiated but never completed situation again, then that is up to the townships and your constituents to decide that. We're just presenting the information that we have today, and the possibilities, and a potential cost for that, to assist you in making that decision of, do you want to deal with it now, or do you want to perhaps kick that can down the road and see what Mother Nature has in terms of storm events? And, and that's for you to decide. Thanks.
I've lived on Ken's Lane for thirty-three years, and we've never had a problem in all those years, any water drainage from the ditch perspective. We have water in our backyards between Ken's and John's and wherever else. I do not believe that any of this is going to impact any of that. So, I'm curious why the Township is seeking to spend a lot of money, tax and spend, and disrupt people's driveways and the road for a relative, at least in my opinion, no real issue. And the only issue I really have is in my backyard, and this isn't even going to address that. I would hope, I, I know you're doing your job of providing a quote, but I hope the Township is looking at what are other alternatives? Can we hold homeowners accountable for cleaning out their ditches? I know my husband cleans out other people's ditches, I know people on our road clean out other people's ditches. If that happened, I think we wouldn't have any issue at all with the, the ditch treatment. And spending a lot of money taxing everybody is not necessarily the only solution. I hope the Township is looking at other solutions.
And if, can I respond, because I've been to these meetings, and it's simply, Eric, this is my client, the first meeting at the Livers Road, there was an incredible group of passionate people that were willing to get their checkbooks out to write checks for a survey. So, that was like this big wave of people that were really prescient, but the Township did a survey to see, okay, do we, do we go forward? And so, they did, so do they have a statistical survey of all people? They did.
They did.
They did, they did, they did. They did, do everybody speak?
They did, not exactly, they just wrote the address.
Oh, they, that's right, they did write the address.
They, 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 sort of, they had, not sure where the address is.
That's true, that's true.
So, did they not have...
So, so what we can tell you is that if there is a petition, that doesn't automatically mean there's a project either, then we'll have a board of determination to take evidence as to whether it's necessary in that specific drainage district to move forward. I have been to numerous boards of determination where they have voted no, so that is also a possibility. I can also tell you that Mr. Soveg, your Drain Commissioner, does not like to spend money that's not necessary to spend, and so, if no improvements are necessary, or no work is necessary, the engineers are going to tell the Drain Commissioner that no work is necessary, but if they find that, in order to meet a ten-year storm, then they're going to bring that information to the Drain Commissioner. So, I guess I'm telling you is, is that if they find that it's not designed to meet that criteria, there'll be work, if they find your drain is fine, or your ditch is fine, then they aren't going to do work that's not necessary. Right, Joe?
But is engi, this whole engineering, the whole area, the only solution? I mean, we can't just clean out ditches?
Well, in, in some situations, just cleaning out a ditch might not be enough to allow you to take, a ten-year storm is how many inches in twenty-four hours, somewhere around two and a half inches of rain without, without flooding. And so, in some situations, it's not just cleaning it out, there may be culverts that are perched, did I use the right word?
Yes.
All right. Culverts that are perched, too small, et cetera, that need to be taken care of, and that's just besides cleaning out leaves, et cetera.
So, let me, let me say this, I live on Ken's Lane, and I have a drain that was buried, and I had some pump that freeze, and so I had a contract file, and this summer, probably, uh, early fall, to get it digged out, it is tied into the drain, the ditch, and he brought it to my attention, he says, we need to look at this, so he brought it to my attention. Whatever size diameter that pipe is, I'm, well, inch, I'm not quite sure exactly, I didn't actually look at the piece of size, half of that pipe is filled with sediment. Now, it goes from my house to my neighbors, and hopefully, the houses down the court goes back to being an exposed ditch again. Can that be jetted out to get rid of that sediment, that mud, debris, to where they can float, and half of that is reduced capacity-wise? And I'm right at the end of Ken's Lane, so I know it's bad enough.
So, these culverts were put in in the eighties? When, when was...
They were put in by the Township when the water project was put in, that's when they were put in.
You never had a culvert in your driveway before, the water project?
Uh, the cover, the majority of the hands that's covered is done by the Township, the water project is put in.
So, depending on the material, to answer your question, sir, depending on the material of the pipe, if it's, if it's a metal pipe and you're jetting out a metal pipe, if it's been sitting full of sediment since whenever, the eighties, the rock, the bottom's probably rusted right out of it. So, once you jet that sediment out of there, you will have no bottom in your culvert in most cases, if it's a metal culvert. If it's a plastic culvert, if it's on grade, it may be able to be jetted out, and, and it'll be fine, but, you know. So, in Ken's Lane, just to state, Ken's Lane has already went through the process, that was an existing county drain, Ken's Lane, Maryland's Drain, and Cedar Ridge, and Whispering Pines. All of those drains were found necessary to board a determination earlier last fall. So, right now, every one of those drains is in a preliminary design stage.
Maybe we should go through that part of your presentation, we didn't even get through the whole presentation.
Well, that's, that's it.
Okay.
You know, so, Ken's Lane, uh, let's just go through that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is a catch basin ever an option rather than drains for these once-in-a-decade or generation floods?
You mean, putting in an enclosed sewer system?
Some type of an overflow catch basin or pond.
But it's going to catch it, and then do what with the water? It has to be tied to some other tile to...
It won't just drain over time?
Uh, in the right circumstances, it would grab a bit.
I'm thinking of the lake on Wheeler Road near Lakeside condominiums, isn't that some type of an overflow water?
Oh, a storage, it's a, yes, that's, that's to hold the water and let it discharge at a certain rate.
Is that ever considered an option for something like this?
Holding it? I don't know where you hold it, unless you'd want it on your property or...
Unless it's down, I'd have no use for that empty land.
Yeah, it's closed the other way, you'd have to pump it mechanically to get it there.
So, to get to the, to the existing county drains, so, tonight we were here mainly to focus on Johns and Woodland. But, the, the four existing county drains, Ken's Lane, there was a board of determination held on October seventeenth, and it was found necessary to, for a project.
Could you explain what you mean by that, that there's already committed that we're spending money on it?
Yes.
Maryland's Lane had a board of determination held on October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, which was found necessary, and there's work being done on a preliminary design. Cedar Ridge was found necessary on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, and right now, it's in a study and report phase, looking at areas in the upper end of that drainage district that does not drain well at all, and looking at how to get that flowing down into the county drain. Whispering Pines branch of the plus drain branch two, we did some preliminary look, that was found necessary also at a board of determination, and what we found on that drain is the branch two of the plus drain, which runs from Jefferson Road to the east to its upper end, towards the Waskevich subdivision. And on the north side of Whispering Pines, there's an eighteen-inch outlet pipe, so that subdivision is tiled, it has a storm sewer system that runs through it, the main outlet goes into the upper end of the plus drain branch two, and that entire eighteen-inch outlet is buried in three foot of sediment. And, so, once, when, when it drains and the water runs out that end of that tile, it can't get out. So, that outlet pipe from the drain back to Acadia, I think it is maybe, uh, that's just full of water, that catch basin's full of water, that water can't go anywhere. We're, right now, we do have a maintenance project, we're opening bids on that on Thursday to clean out the branch two of the plus drain, to get that outlet open back up. So, and then we'll take a look at what needs to be done on Whispering Pines, that may be all that needs to be done, we don't know that yet. But, those four drains that we just talked about, those were all found necessary last fall, at a board of determination.
What makes them necessary?
Testimony that is given, and the board decides based on testimony.
So, those are already drains that are under the jurisdiction of the Drain Commissioner, they were already went through establishment proceedings on a prior project, there was a petition, and then last fall, if you want to go back a slide, everyone in those drainage districts was sent a mailing to have a public hearing that was at the Township Hall, and we were there for each one of these days to hear testimony as to whether, um, work should be, uh, maintenance improvement should be performed or not, and the boards voted on each one of them. So, there was a mailing that went out for each of those drains. Yes.
I can only speak to the cans, but the, I was there, another resident was there, both of us said there was no need. The county, the Township put into evidence that they had done a survey on the cans that indicated the majority of people wanted something to be done, so they didn't, there was no such survey. The board of determination ignored the people who lived on the drain in that, it's October seventeenth.
So, um, so the board found it necessary based on the information, yes, you were there, and then there wasn't, so, they found it necessary, it's your opinion that they ignored different things, but they also had a presentation of what the existing conditions were with regard to that, and then testimony from the Township as to other residents, and there was an opportunity... And there was an opportunity to appeal all of these decisions, and no one appealed those decisions.
Three days ago, I went to Washington, that I contacted the office about how to do an appeal, and it was a three-day window that I could do the appeal.
No, no.
I contacted the drain commissioner to ask.
So I stated at the end of each of those meetings that there was a, so first of all, we are, if you want to appeal something, then you need to go through the court process to do that, and we cannot give you legal advice. But I can tell you, at each one of these meetings, at the end, we had something on the agenda said, "Appeal," and it's 10 days after the date to go to Circuit Court in Midland County, and that was announced at each and every one of those meetings. Now, if you were gone for a week and came back a week later, there was three days as possible. But at each meeting, I personally, and there might have been one I wasn't there, I personally announced that there was 10 days' appeal period. And we have transcripts that will go over that.
And so now that it's been approved, no matter what design is made, the township has to pay whatever?
So on, so on an established county drain where the maintenance and improvement petitions, so but for the first two that we went through, but Ken's Lane, Maryland's Lane, et cetera, those are already under the jurisdiction of the drain commissioner. There's already a special assessment district. Those properties have already previously been assessed in years past. This project was found necessary for these improvement projects. There will be an assessment to the township, to the county, and to the residents for those improvements. And there was a series of township board meetings to go over this. And to be honest, I do this in 60 different counties. Larkin Township Board spent more time going over this than almost any township I've ever worked with in all of those counties. And then we had the board of determination meeting to go through that as well. So yes, there was a series of meetings about each of these that took place that already had an existing drain.
Yeah. Can you discuss what the homeowner's options are for covering the costs in terms of can you stretch it out over a period of time, how they're assessed?
Great question. So for an assessment, first of all, it will not be, with the exception of the one where there's maintenance, any assessments this year, because we're not far enough along in the process. Drain assessments are only on the winter tax bill, not on the summer tax bill, and they're a line item on your tax bill. Depending on the cost of the project and how many property owners it gets to assess to, what the township share is, what the county share is, the drain commissioner will work with a financial advisor to determine how many years to spread it over. So for a petition project, it can go up to as many as 20 years. It could be one year up to 20 years, depending on, we'll work with a financial advisor to determine affordability and what makes sense from an interest perspective. Again, at that time, then you'll have the opportunity to prepay it, so it's never on your taxes. So we'll know the amount, and then you can send, before we borrow the money, you can send your payment in for your share, it'll never go on your taxes. Or it can be levied with interest over that time period as a line item on your winter taxes only. And so depending on what the prices come in, what the township and the county share is, then we'll look at that. A 10-year time period is not that uncommon.
Then are there individual decisions with respect to the work that's done on your property, like this culvert versus this culvert?
So the sizing will be handled by a professional engineer, and their design standard is gonna be a 10-year storm design. And so that's what they're gonna look at in terms of putting those in. I know that they will, at any time, if you, if the drain traverses your property, call the drain commissioner's office. They'll get in touch with the engineers about specifics about your property, but they will be looking at making that a 10-year storm design. In certain situations, if your culvert is sized correctly already, and it's questionable whether it should be replaced, they may make a phone call to you. Do you want to, if we do it now as part of the project, well, there's a cost you're involved. If you want to kick the can down the road individually on that, okay, but then it's gonna be 100% of your cost if we don't do it now.
And those decisions are with the contractor?
With, no, with the drain office before the contractor is hired.
So our criteria, when we're looking at designing improvements to a county drain related to culverts, we look at, first is the size. Does this meet the size requirements for the 10-year storm? Then we look, is it on grade? If it's not on grade, it needs to be replaced, or if it's in good enough condition, possibly lowered. And then, and then condition. Is it all rusted out? Is it a plastic pipe that you can work with? You know, that's, but that's the three things that we look at. If a culvert is on grade, it's the right size, and it's in good condition, we won't touch it.
You've mentioned several times the county and the township share. As I just ballpark figure, what amounts are we talking about for the county and the township?
So.
20, 50?
We're not, I can't, I can't. Yeah. So it is so different from drain to drain that I'm uncomfortable.
Well, that's a higher little bit you've seen.
I can give them high. I mean, we've got the current drain right now, where the county is 29%.
I would consider that. I would not plan on the county paying 29% of this project. So 10% might be, 10% county, and then it might be 15% township, something like that. But I don't want anybody to write that down and think that that's what it's gonna be, because who knows?
That's why I asked for ballpark.
Yep, yep. But, and I've done this enough times that once I say those numbers, then they become ingrained in people's minds. Yes, sir.
Can you comment on the timing for the Ken's Lane project, when construction will take place and assessments?
Well, right now, it's in preliminary design, and so it would probably, at this point, it could get, it may, it could get bid out and constructed this fall possibly. Or if it didn't get constructed this fall, it would probably get constructed next spring.
Which would mean December 2024 tax bill, most likely. Small chance this year, 90% chance next year.
I'm trying to remember the meeting where we had the individual drain districts. Did we have estimates like that was just lined out for Ken's Lane or for Johns and so we don't know? We just know it's gonna happen?
No, no. For a brand-new drain, it's a requirement in that first step to place those costs. In the other ones, we didn't do engineering to determine an estimate, because we didn't even know if it was gonna be found necessary or not. And so based on the need, as is in most drain projects, when it's in a maintenance and improvement project, there's not an estimate.
So on these existing drains where there's currently being design work done on the drain commissioner, it's not a required meeting, but the drain commissioner can hold a public informational meeting to lay out what the improvements are gonna be and lay out what the estimated cost would be at that time.
Okay, I want to add to the, there were some costs thrown out when we were reviewing the individual chapter eights of the current existing county drains. One of the questions that I asked the township, because at this stage, before we do any work, once we, let's say we complete a project, and we do it, and we've replaced the existing infrastructure the way it is today. If it's open, it'll remain open. If it's closed, it'll be closed. There is the option of enclosing the entire thing. And so you may have heard some numbers, they were probably based on the enclosing the entire thing. I wanted to give the township that option, because it is an option, but it's more of a want. It's not a need. It would be more of a want. If you believe that an enclosed system that would look more like a city lot, then you'd your yard would be enlarged, you wouldn't see open ditches, you wouldn't have cottails. That's a, that's a two X cost. That's like more than two times the cost. But I'm not, I'm not gonna make decisions on a cost if the, it's overwhelming that the township and the landowners in these districts want to enclose it to maybe make it look more appealing to them. Some people like open ditches, some people like the enclosed ditches. Most of the new subdivisions that you'll see in any of the townships, they are, many of them are enclosed, and for a reason. There's a market for people that want more of a rural setting, but a city feel perhaps. I'm not inclined to move forward with enclosing an entire system that's not currently enclosed. I think it's a drastic increase in cost to you. There is some benefits, but I wouldn't be able to justify those and just say, impose that on you. But I wanted to give you the option that if you guys all overwhelmingly say that this will improve our land values and marketability of our subdivision, then you can, you can make that, that choice. And then, of course, I will adhere to a choice that's overwhelming. But for the most part, the systems that exist now is how we intend to replace them with, to look the same way. Open, that's open. Closed, it's closed. And not do any major enhancements to it, because we're trying to just get the drainage working.
How do the homeowner have to give that kind of input? Because it seems like a lot of times you find out about giving input like the A on. So how do we give input to the township so that we can say, you know, overwhelming cost is not all?
So I think we just talked about an informational meeting where we'll have an opportunity to look at, here's costs of as it is, here's costs where it might be able to be enclosed. And I say might be because there are permitting considerations that will come into place where it might not be, it might not be possible because of permits through the state. And so I think the drain commissioner has basically said, in these instances, he'll hold an informational meeting to provide that type of opportunity for input.
Is there only one quote, or are there like three quotes there?
These aren't, these aren't like medieval quotes. These are, what I needed to know just for informational for the township is, what is an estimate to replace the system as is, to current standard? Okay, that's one. Then the option, if you want to broach enclosing the entire system, here's what it would cost. And we did a napkin type of a cost estimate. I don't want them to spend any more money on that if it's not something that's gonna be of interest to anybody. But we wanted to get an estimate, and we just did it at a, you know, at a table, just running the figures, and it's over two times the cost. So, but to clarify something that Stacy said about permitting, under the existing, the drains that exist today, if I'm replacing, improving those, but replacing them, so the open's gonna be the open and the closed is gonna be closed, I am exempt from state permits. I don't have to get permits for that. If we're going to enclose more than 100 feet that currently isn't enclosed, I have to get an Eagle permit. And I have experience in my short tenure that going that route is expensive and time-consuming, and currently, I've got a permit that I'm waiting on from Eagle for six years. It's a little more drastic than what would be needed here, but the potential for time delays, and time delays means that potential cost will increase later on for construction in materials. So I'm backing down as far as going too far on the enclosed portion, because I, it's not a necessary thing. It would be a want. And so how, I guess the township would like to come to some sort of consensus on that, but we're kind of geared towards not enclosing what's not enclosed.
Is that an all or nothing proposition?
You mean enclosed part or not enclosed part?
Homeowners like make that decision individually, or is it an all drain?
I just want to answer your question first. So what these are, these numbers that you're hearing are engineers' estimates. If a project moves forward, the project goes to a bidding process. So contractors will pick up plans, they'll study the plans, they'll come out and look at the project, and they'll put a bid in on it. And typically, then, it's the low bid dependent. It doesn't always have to be the low bid. We want a qualified contractor that does the work, but it's a bidding process.
And to answer your question, I'm gonna speak for these folks right now in terms of can we go house by house and decide enclosed or open ditch? It really is gonna, to be honest, if you have to get an Eagle permit, and they're not gonna say 300, is 300 feet cumulative to get it, requirement to get it? An Eagle permit is actually any enclosure, and then red files it and sends it to the EPA or the Army Corps in terms of more than 300 feet. So it would be, if it's, if it's required to get permits for enclosure, that would be almost impossible to be able to do. And so I think that if this needs permitting for enclosures, it's gonna be cost prohibitive, whether you want it or not, because, not because of the cost of the pipe, but because of the cost and the requirements of the permit. If it's not regulated, I don't think so, but if it's not regulated, then that may be more of a possibility. But in talking with the engineer, it sounds like most of these are regulated, would be the definition of a stream and therefore regulated. And there's nothing we can do about that.
So what does this mean for trees lining the edge of the ditch? Are we gonna lose trees, or are we gonna save them?
For the most, in the most cases, if the tree is in the, in the bank of the drain, so for instance, let's say Ken's and Maryland's Lane, those projects are gonna be, the ditches are gonna be excavated from the road. All the spoils are gonna be hauled away, because we're not gonna get an excavator up in your yard to dig it from your yard, right? So we'll be on the road, protecting the road as the contractor moves through. They'll load the spoils that they're digging. They may set them up on the shoulder to let them de-water a bit before they load them in the truck and haul them out. If the, if you have a tree on the yard side bank of the drain that's in the bank, typically that's gonna come up, that's gonna get cut down. If it's on the top of the bank and it doesn't impede excavation of the drain, in most cases, we can leave those.
How far into your front yard are you allowed to go with drainage?
Well, there's a drain right-of-way on every drain. And right now, I want to say that the typical drain right-of-way, and I can't answer you right now exactly what the right-of-way is on Ken's or Maryland's Lane, but the typical is three rods on each side of the center line of the drain, which is 49 and a half feet on each side.
From the center of the road?
So from the center of the drain.
I believe these are all located in the road right-of-way.
So, right, and what, so, and Nick just made the point that they are, these are in the road right-of-way. So typically, you know, either a road right-of-way is typically either 66 feet on each side of the center line of the drain, or 50 sometimes in a planted subdivision.
So, so in terms of, if we need to do work and it's outside of that road right-of-way, we're gonna need to get an easement to do that. But I think if it's at all possible to save a tree, even if it's in the easement area, and it's not necessary for construction, like Dave mentioned, we're gonna save, we're gonna save a tree.
I'm a little confused here. Are you talking about the ditches, or are you talking about some other lines that are going through the properties?
Yes.
Yes, what?
Both. It depends on the situation. In some of these drains, it's on the road ditches, but then there's also some of the drains that go through properties in the first one that we looked at as an example that go through parcels.
Not on Ken's? Okay, so.
Not on Ken's. So it depends on which drainage district you live in. Some have just in the roads, but some have others that traverse through properties.
Now, am I hearing correctly? Because I thought I heard you say if it needs to be replaced. So are we just doing a blanket, we're replacing them all? Or are you going property line by property line?
Yeah, everything gets evaluated. Every culvert gets evaluated. Every driveway culvert gets evaluated. And like I said, it's either, our criteria is, is it big enough for the 10-year drain for the 10-year storm event? So if you currently have a 12-inch culvert, and the calculations say it needs to be a 15- or an 18-inch culvert, then it would be replaced. If the, if the culvert is not on grade, if it's perched, like this gentleman mentioned earlier, that a culvert was installed backwards, so it has to flow up the culvert instead of down the culvert, that would not meet the requirement of being on grade, and it would either be lowered or replaced. And if it's conditioned, then we look at the condition. If the culvert is just rusted out and in bad shape, it would be replaced.
And then is the cost that we will be covering just for our property, or is there a base cost and then our property on top of it?
So everyone in the district, whether the drain is on their property or not, will be assessed? If we are replacing a specific culvert on If we are replacing a specific culvert on your property, there's probably going to be a cost share. You'll have to pay a portion on the district because the, the district's water goes through that. We'll also have to pay a portion of that. If you decide, nope, this is a one that's on the borderline and you get to decide, and you decide to wait because you don't want to pay your extra portion, you're still going to get assessed for this project. And then five years from now, you change your mind or it goes bad, the whole cost of that is on you at that point.
Joe, you're looking for a house, you said?
Not the other one.
Yes.
So is there like a new 40-year? So like right now, the Waldo drain has just been destroyed. So who's responsible for keeping that drain flowing and properly maintained so that we're not here 40 years?
So in, so in inter-county drainage districts, the Drainage Board is responsible for the maintenance of the Waldo. And so, but that maintenance is limited to so many dollars a mile without a petition. So lack of maintenance is a reason that a drain might not get, not be in good shape. But whatever happens in the watershed impacts that drain. So there could be things that happen outside of the Drainage Board's control that requires that drain to need a petition project. Like as an example, when the Waldo drain was put in, there was no such thing as a subdivision, you know? And so it was designed for what was there at the time. And then all these subdivisions come in. It wasn't for lack of maintenance necessarily that the Waldo needed work on it. It was because now it's, the landscape that it was serving completely changed. That's, that's the main reason that projects take place. Great question.
Um, in regards to, you talked quite a bit about closed and so it would look better, et cetera, kind of thing. But, um, so if you have any closed, like I moved into a house that was on there and it didn't look better. But I heard you say that when it's done, it's fixed to the way it was before. So I'm a little confused. Do you, do you have to get a permit to, to replace what was there?
No, if it's currently, if it's currently enclosed like that, it would be replaced like that.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Oh, let's go over here first.
Is there any guarantees we won't have to accrue any more costs in the next 10 years?
No guarantees.
If you can tell us what Mother Nature's going to do.
If you have this meeting and on the five years, you did assess another thing.
No, typically by, by law, on a petition project, I have to have contingency built into it between 10 and 15 percent. So as long as the project is managed properly, the, there should be some money left over in, in contingency. And that for, yes. Hopefully for the duration of, let's say, the bond amortization. If we go 15 years or 20 years on it, that we would have enough money to maintain it. You know, spray it for weed control, you know, not let trees grow in the channel, that sort of thing. So it'll be minimal for the most part, but we may have, I don't know in these subdivisions per se, but all over the county, we have beaver dams that have to be removed. And I have to hire somebody to do that. I do not budget a dollar, one dollar. I don't have a budget to maintain these drains. Any dollar that I spend, I have to assess it back to the people that benefit it, which are the people in the drainage district. So I'm constantly trapping beavers, pulling beavers, pulling tires out, trees fall. Those things happen over time. Especially in our county, a lot of standing dead ash are falling into the drains. They have to get removed. And, and that tips typically costs some money to, to make that happen. But we will use whatever balance that we have remaining so we don't have to assess. And I don't even know by law if we're allowed to assess when they have a current.
You are, you are, yeah.
We're, we're about 20 years out to still paying on the water project. Ken's Lane, half of the ditches were covered at that time by the then Drain Commissioner who was not. What's a lifetime proposed feel though? If you're talking about tearing them all up?
What's a lifetime of drain?
Um, it just depends. The materials that they're using now for culverts, they're using a lot of plastic, so those last longer. If they were put in back in the eighties, typically.
The drains were put in 20 years ago, it'd be still just finished paying on the water project.
So if they're put in metal, you know, then if they're rusted and they need to be replaced, you know, a typical corrugated metal pipe has a lifespan of 25 years. Now, if there's a special coating on it, it may bring that lifespan up to 50 years. But these drains, they don't last forever. There's, there's going to be work on them. Typically, if we do a drain, a big, a large drain project like the Waldo, it may be, you know, 40 years before there's another large drain, large scale drain project on it.
And those were, those.
You just never know.
Those metal culverts were aluminized to give them a little more life. But once you get to a certain size, plastic isn't, isn't usable. You can't use plastic over what, 60? 60 inches. So we have to go to metal after that, or concrete. But concrete would be very expensive.
And it just goes to the maintenance. You have to constantly maintain the drains. So if, if, if you're on like the Waldo drain, there's probably going to be put on a, a spray program that might get sprayed every three or four years to keep the brush and the trees out of the right of way. So you don't get those trees growing up in the right of way that blow over into the drain.
So to sum.
Try to maintain it to keep those areas clear.
To sum it all up, for the prop, for the drains that were pre-existing that we had maintenance improvement petitions on, that had the hearings and found necessary, after more of the engineering is completed, the Drain Commissioner will hold informational meetings for each of those drains, separate meetings for each of those drains. Here's what we found, here's some options, here's what our potential costs are. We'll send, we'll let the township know when that happens and notices will be sent out with regard to that. We're not ready yet from an engineering standpoint to have that. With regard to the first two projects that we talked about, Woodland Estates and then John's Lane, our work is done for now and it's now up to the township and the property owners within those two drainage districts to determine if we're going to take the next step to petition. If that happens, then we'll hold a board of determination where our property owners can come in and talk about the issues. We'll have our engineering report about the issues and a board of determination will determine whether to go forward with the project or not. So that's where we are with each of these drains. More to come, well, maybe we're done with these two, who knows? But more to come on the other ones and the next would be the informational meetings. All right, thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to continue on?
Get your homework done.
We have much rain.
I don't care, I don't care if the dog ate your homework. I want to.
I'm going home.
Thank you guys so much. All right, the next me, the next thing on the agenda is whether or not we want to extend the contract.
So we're trying to have meetings. We're trying to finish our meetings.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, whether or not we want to extend the contract with Eric Reinhardt for that property. Or do we want to find a different realtor?
Is that six months or?
Six months.
Okay, I can't hear you at all.
Okay, we have to figure out whether or not we want to extend our, our listing agent. Our contract expires in a week. Do we want to?
For the other two lots.
Right, for the other two lots. Do we want to extend it for another six months? Do we want to extend it for another six months?
I make the motion that we extend another six months with safe person.
Okay, all right. Motion by Todd, supported by, by Jill to extend the contract with Shannon Kilinger to list the final two lots for sale. Is there further discussion? Roll call please.
Maria?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Say yes. Dan?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes. Motion Karen.
Motion Karen, all right. Next thing on the agenda. We have the consent agenda to approve the 2023 payroll, the March and April invoices and the minutes from the March 13th, 14th meeting. That should be corrected, 14th meeting. And the March 31st special meeting.
I have a correction.
Okay.
On the minutes, my name's not included on one of those.
Get out, I spelled it wrong again?
No, you haven't put her name in there at all. You made her invisible.
Okay, I'll fix that.
I tell you what page, but now I have to find it.
Okay, okay, I'll find it.
I mean, if you don't want to include me, I guess you don't have to.
So is that a motion to accept it with that change?
Um, for the minutes, yeah.
Okay. So let's do the payroll and the invoices separately then.
Page three, the top, the top. Motion by Vettner Rich, supported by Mo to approve Resolution 323. I'm not included in the vote.
Okay, I'll put you in there, sorry.
That's all right.
I did a copy paste and didn't paste enough.
She says I went to the bathroom, but I'm.
Could be? All right. So motion by Jill, is there support?
I'll support it.
Supported by Dan to accept the April payroll and the invoices, the minutes from the March 14th meeting and the March 31st meeting with the correction noted by Jill. This is a consent agenda, is there further discussion? Consent agenda, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, do we have a fire department representative here tonight?
No, Robert couldn't be here.
Yeah, Robert texted me, said he wasn't going to be able to make it and he will have his report next month.
Okay. Lisa?
The election is May 2nd. We had our meeting tonight for the commission to approve our workers, so that's done. The website is ready to go live, I'm just making some tweaks to it so the new website will be ready to go. And that's all I have for the clerk.
We got the AEDs?
Oh, and we got our AEDs and Robert's given me some places to put them. So we're going to have those put in as soon as all the painting's done. So nobody can have a heart attack until they're done. I'd rather not have one after either, but I'm just saying, so. I, I will bring this up now, it's in the hall. So as you can see, we're getting a lot of painting done and we changed the way the ugly ceiling was down in that weird V. So because of that, the painter didn't include painting these beams, nor did he know he was going to have to do all that patching. So he has had to increase his bid a snitch for that by, it's going to cost him, one second, $2,900. Because he also did the bathroom stalls and he didn't realize, when he came here to give the estimate that rolling door was up, he didn't know there was a door.
Oh, okay.
So that was my bad. So mostly it's all repairs on the drywall that he wasn't aware of. So it's an extra $2,900. But I think, as you can see, this looks, it looks a little funky now, but when it gets painted, it's going to look better than that dropped. And I'm going to call the ceiling people because they said, because they had to do that soffit over there because the wall was here and the ceiling was here. So there was this gap between that wall and the ceiling, so they couldn't just run the ceiling straight. They had to build that soffit. So they only charged me for materials for that. But I'm thinking, because we haven't used the materials for all of this, that I should have saved some money. So I'm going to talk to them about the fact that they used the lotless ceiling tile on what was in the original estimate, as far as I know. Because I think originally we were going to do it the exact same way. So I'm hoping I'll get a little bit of money back on about $2,900. But I hope we will get a little bit back. And I hope you guys all like it because it's going to be considerably better when it's done.
Chris?
Ceiling tile looks great, just want to put comment. Is there going to be anything done about events? I was just noticing that it's really beat up.
Yes, that was on the list. Yeah, they're really beat up. Yes, so we're going to, they're, they're ordered, they're not here yet, so.
It just seems brighter and bigger in here. I think it really.
Seems a lot bigger with the, with the V on.
Yeah, it just looks.
We are going to paint that dark, but I think it's going to make it look more like, you know, in the more urban, like bars and apartments and stuff like that, it gives that industrial look. So that'll make it a lot more modern looking. And luckily the Code Authority came out and it was a chance that we were going to have to have fireproof paint, which is $150 a gallon. And, but we did not. He said that wasn't necessary, thank goodness. So that'll save us some money.
All right, so do you need a motion?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Because it's increased between.
Was that your motion that?
Yes.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
All right, motion by Lisa, supported by Kathy to accept the additional charges for the painter. Further discussion? Roll call please, Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Say yes. Dan?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Maria? Yes.
Excellent.
Motion carried, okay.
That's all I have for the clerk.
All right. Treasurer doesn't have a report tonight because we didn't have our. Treasurer doesn't have a report tonight, because we didn't have our statements yet. Township Code Authority, he took my computer, so I'm going to have to get the numbers off of there.
Oh, I have my computer here, hold on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it on the slide, hold on one second.
Do you?
Yep.
It'll be a race, who can get it first.
We wanted to, um, here we go, building permits for one new house, free plumbing, fourteen mechanical, and fourteen electrical.
Yep.
And as of the first of April, the new, uh,
Rates are going into effect?
Rates went into effect.
Good.
Yep.
Okay. Lesson learned, we've got to keep on top of those, yeah, that's a good, good, okay. So zoning enforcement, Brad has been out and about again, and he's working on, he's got some complaints about people with chickens that have exceeded the amount that our ordinance allows. He's checking on that. He's also, whatever I have on my.
Sorry.
He's working on.
One blight issue taken to court, judge gave resident thirty days to clean up.
Yep.
There's also complaints regarding dog barking and blights.
Yep, he's got a couple of blights that he's working on as well. And again, he's doing his Brad thing, and he's doing very, very well in communicating with everyone, and I'm not getting the near amount of complaints that we used to get, so. He's doing a really good job. Yeah, he's doing his Brad thing, that's what I tell him, he's got his Brad way about him. All right, the cemetery, the fence was broken out in front, they fixed that, and he's checking on the columbariums. We had a couple of, we did end up talking to Lee Township. Lee Township has got a columbarium that they had installed during COVID. They sold their, they sold a whole bunch of them, but they had their first actual ashes buried in that columbarium this week. So they're real excited about that, that they actually have their first one. They love it.
They sound so morbid.
Yes! Filling up our columbarium.
It's good that there's nobody here.
It's being recorded, though.
They're dying to get in.
Yeah, they're dying to get in. But they, they're real happy with it, they got theirs locally from here on, uh, here on Granite, I believe it is.
Sure, so, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, okay, that's where they got it from. And they had a lot of problems, because it was during COVID, and it was, they had a lot of problems with delivery and getting people to do things, but now that they've got it up and going, they, they, they're real happy with it, so, yeah. So if you ever have any questions, or you want to go out and see it, she said we're welcome to go out and see it, so, yeah. All right, Perk, what do you got? You already talked a lot about that.
Yeah, Dan, I know Dan and those guys trimmed a bunch of trees again, and then the baseball fields up front are going to be done. We did not get our grant, I'm so disappointed, but the baseball field will be done soon, and same with the volleyball pit. And then we're going, I'm going to work with the two installers to make sure we know what maintenance we need to do every year, so that we keep them, so we don't have to do a big, hopefully for a long, long time, to keep them updated.
Okay. When do we get our kabota?
What's that?
When do we get our kabota?
I did not check.
Okay. And what were you saying, baseball what?
Baseball is up and running, and they were chomping at the bit to get in here, so I think they're practicing. And I don't miss that at all from when my children were little, so.
Yeah, I got tons and tons of requests to open up the gates, because it was, and poor Mandy took those calls every day to open up the gates, but I said, you guys are going to exercise, you can walk, so.
And while Mandy was on vacation, we had six civilian rentals in two days.
Oh, wow.
So.
Getting ready for graduation, apparently.
It was about as busy as I've ever seen it yesterday, even with the gates closed, I think they had three diamonds going.
Oh, good, good.
I think having the baseball tournament here really helped.
Little League is starting.
Yeah, Little League is starting, and people realize that we have a really nice place to practice and play ball.
Sure. Okay, planning, what you got?
Um, we had two people to come talk about drainage, one on Monroe and one on Jane Drive. And, um, do you want to do your Wade Trim thing?
Yeah, sure.
That's all you're going to say about the drainage? You're on, you heard it all. Well, we did have two things that we wanted the board to consider. We have a bid for doing our master plan, guiding us through it, doing all the, jumping through all the hoops, the notices and everything else, and actually conducting, helping to conduct some feedback from the township, and the bid is like nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And so we had a motion passed that said we would like to see if we could have approval for spending no more than twenty thousand dollars on the master plan. So that was one thing.
Who was the bid from?
Wade Trim.
Wade Trim.
Wade Trim, okay.
Yeah, never heard from the other folks.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Lisa, did you find out, how much was it last time?
Oh, shit. I'm sorry.
You knew that, you did this before, Karen?
Yeah.
It was like five thousand.
Five thousand, yeah. That's what I was thinking, it's a lot more than, I thought the twenty was, that's why I heard.
Scope is way bigger, or two, though.
Yes, scope is way bigger.
You don't remember who did it last time, do you?
Wade Trim.
Oh, Wade Trim did last time too, sorry.
You do it for free, if we want to go over it, you can jump.
Right.
And the other thing, we have a draft of the home occupation ordinance that we're working on, and I had them put a copy of it in each worst, and so anybody has any comments, whatever. The biggest changes are that he was suggesting having employees, but also that you could use like a garage or a barn, or some kind of storage area, was the add, kind of, that was the major add-in.
Yeah, two major things that were suggested by the committee that were considering it was use of auxiliary buildings, so that they wouldn't always have to have everything inside the home. And the other was up to two non-family employees. And we debated that, no consensus within the planning commission. We agreed to mull it for another month. Somebody suggested, hey, let's get any feedback that board might have, so that's the purpose for that even coming up. But, you know, there's split opinions on those two issues.
I was told that we didn't need to give you a reply back until May, is that the case, or do you want it earlier than that?
Anytime you give us any feedback, that's great.
Okay, okay. Yeah, let us, let us think about it, yeah.
It's a big change, that's why I wanted, you know, that's a huge change.
Because you're really cutting into commercial property now, you know, with that outbuildings and employees, so, yeah.
I'm trying to be objective in saying that it was up in the air.
Yeah.
But I do have a personal opinion.
Okay. Well, think about it, board, you've all got a copy of it, and let's talk about it. Let's give them any feedback that we've got, you know, if, you want to talk about it at your next meeting in May?
We will.
Okay, so please give the board, the planning commission, any feedback that you've got.
Yes, please.
Okay.
It looks like the Wade Trim was about six thousand altogether.
Okay, six thousand.
Couple of partial.
Yeah. So do you want a, a motion tonight to go ahead with the Wade Trim, is that what you're after?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll submit that motion.
All right, motion by Lisa, is there support?
I'll support it, even though it's expensive.
Why is it so expensive now?
Just because?
Because the scope has changed dramatically.
Dramatically.
So you said the scope is larger, what's larger about the scope?
Well, yeah, the scope is larger than it was last time. It includes, um, at least three, two, I can't remember now, meetings for feedback from trying to gather township people together. Last time we did that, we had an opportunity for people to come, hardly anybody showed up. A decade and a half ago, we had a lot of people show up. So whether people would show up again, I have no idea, but the process would include that opportunity. Now, there's certain notices that have to be sent out ahead of time to the surrounding jurisdictions, and then towards the end of it, those notices have to go out again with the draft. All of that is kind of a housekeeping chore, although it's not inexpensive to do that. Rarely do you find any feedback from surrounding jurisdictions. You used to have to go to the county planning commission, which doesn't exist anymore, so that's a step that's removed, but the main features of the book that's put together at the end of it is put together by Wade Trim or whoever does it. And then there's a couple of steps of review by the planning commission as that's being done. And we get all new maps, updated maps from the township. So existing land use and projected land use. We'll probably weave into it, even though it's not necessary for the actual master plan, get an updated zoning map, too, we're hoping to be able to do that internally, but that's technology that they already have that has most of our data in it, so.
So the notices and all that stuff, that was all done the last time, too. I'm just, you said it, you said it both, that the scope is so much bigger, I'm trying to get a picture in my head of what that means.
See, I don't remember what it was last time.
Sixty-two hundred.
I hear that number around, because I would like to know.
It was about six thousand dollars, it looks like.
So, do you, what's the, do you know what the bigger scope is?
What we discussed in the, in the meeting, Karen, I was wrong, but is, there, there was the sense that a more thorough rewrite was in order. Basically, it's, it's been updates of the existing master plan for the last, um, last few cycles.
When I was involved in it, it was the overhaul, it wasn't the update, it was the overhaul. So now, five years later, I'm kind of wondering, why are we doing an overhaul again? And you both, you both said it's a bigger scope, and I'd like to know what the bigger scope is.
I don't think.
Because we had public meetings, we had group discussions, we had surveys sent out, we had all this stuff, and I was involved in all of it.
We, we agreed at that time that no major changes were necessary, and this is looking at possible major changes.
Well, that was looking at possible major changes, too, just because we didn't do them doesn't mean we didn't look at them. Because I remember going through and going through every one of those sections and saying, does this still apply? And some of them were changed.
I, I have a comment for all that, though, so when we were reviewing the Lutz Road thing, with the extension, I went back to what I thought was the most current master plan, it was actually the ten-year ago master plan, much more comprehensive than the one that was done five years ago. Because in the ten-year master plan, they, okay, I don't know north and south, okay, so whichever direction Lutz is going, the master plan says there's significant lack of roads going that direction in the township, and that that was something we needed to consider. So when I was answering their questions about Lutz Road, I'm like, oh, look, it's in our master plan. Then I realized that was the ten-year ago plan, and the five-year ago plan doesn't mention any of that. Most of the five-year plan from, from five years ago, the master plan was mostly what people were complaining about in the township, but what the residents came in and said they didn't like. It wasn't like, where are we going to go, and what kind of, you know, the city's doing their master plan right now, I would hate to guess how much they're spending, because they're doing all kinds of input, they had one at the community center that I went to, and they have, they have business cards and postcards, you can do the QR code and tell them what you want, and rank what's important to you, and all these things. I mean, they're not just looking for what do you not like, they're asking, where do you want us to go, where do you want us to be? And I know we're not the city of Midland, and we don't have the budget they have for that, but I'm just saying that they're really looking at where they want to be, as opposed to where they are, what people don't like.
So responding to that, we did send out a thing ranking what is important to you, and we did go through all those surveys, and we did get a lot of responses. And it wasn't just, I don't, do you remember this? There was a thing about, okay, what don't you like about our township, and then there was a thing, rank these things according to what's most important to you, and all that was taken into consideration.
Yeah, I'll say that, um, from my own standpoint, when this first came up several months ago, I did look at my paper copy of the ten-year-old master plan and the one that we did back in 2017, I think it was, and it was almost verbatim in a lot of sections, I didn't see anything that was taken out, so your specific section that you're mentioning, Lisa, I didn't see anything like that. I'm human, it's possible, I missed it, but, um, that's kind of.
I looked all over the five, the last one, and I could not find it, because I was just going to cut.
Yeah, I am, I saw it comparing line to line, but, um, yeah, that was the sense that we got, that a more thorough review for that was needed. I won't speak my opinion here, but that's what we were, we felt that we were tasked with, and that's where the estimate came from.
Well, honestly, if you're mailing stuff out, postage has went up probably, I would say, a good fifty cents a letter.
QR codes didn't really exist.
What's that?
QR codes didn't exist.
Exactly, exactly. And, and postage has gone up so much lately that, I mean, I can, even just the mailing is going to cost so much more than it did five years ago.
Even with our recreational plan, with our recreational plan, when we did it online, and we had that survey, and we had such a huge response from that, maybe we can consider doing something like that, and, but they would have to create the, the survey, and they would, like Spicer did for us. I don't find a problem with their price, really, for what they're, what they're tasked to do, and if they do it as we ask them to do it.
It's about a nine or ten month process at least.
Right, it's a long time.
Yeah, could be a year.
Yeah.
Give and take, and back and forth.
And I think years ago, we, we spent more than five or six thousand dollars on a, a plan, I mean.
Yeah, I was told that that six thousand dollars that we spent, I thought it was five thousand, it was six thousand, was really cheaper. I remember our conversation about that, that that was way cheaper than what you've been used to before, so, yeah.
Let me see what the, oh, there's a whole bunch of, uh, two thousand, well, that was just copies. I would have started in eleven. She's got it weird in here, I don't know, she's got it all at the contractor services. There's one in two thousand four where we spent ten thousand dollars to Wade Trim.
Yeah, I was going to say that, in two thousand four.
That would have been it, yeah.
So that was twenty years ago, we spent ten, so. And that was only one of the bills, there was also, oh, it was way, yeah, it was way more than that, it was significantly more. It was probably closer to twenty in two thousand four.
Yeah.
It was close to twenty. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Yeah, over twenty in two thousand four, we spent Wade Trim.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table right now, with Lisa making the motion to accept it, Kathy supported it. Do we have further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Oh, I did want to, sorry, Todd, I know, I'm going. Um, we did put that in the budget, correct? I mean, we, we accounted for the fact that we needed to do the master plan this year, it's not like it's surprise. Okay, Todd?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Karen? Sorry, Karen. Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Karen?
Motion, motion carried. Okay, what else you got?
That's it?
That's it? Yay.
It was a long view, we had lots of discussions.
Yeah, and you're right, because the rain, the excessive amount of rain that we got, all of a sudden, people were calling me about their ditches being full again, too. And I was like, we're doing, you know, just, we're doing it, we're working on this, and that's what all these meetings have been about, so, yeah.
I will say that one of the things that came up, and does seem to come up frequently, and even tonight, people see a lot more water in their backyards or side yards and so forth, and the question is, what can you do about that? We're going to try to do something about making sure that when a new home is put in, they have to be sure to have a plan for the drainage. There's a state code that supposedly applies while a building is being constructed, but I'm told by the township code authority that once the home is done, they can't go back and do anything about it. So we want to make that correction.
Okay, that's good, so you don't flood out your neighbors, because you build higher and. Okay, that's good. So you don't flood out your neighbors, because you build higher and, and everybody keeps building higher and higher and higher, yeah. Okay, good. Okay, Hall is next. Did you say everything you need to say about the hall? Are you good about the hall?
We think we know why the Wi-Fi is not working. We think it might be the router because I couldn't get online here. So now we're gonna have Henry to help us tomorrow.
Okay, good.
We tried to unplug things, but.
Okay, zoning board of appeals.
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, assessor, you've got the report?
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Oh, sorry. The 2023 March Board of Review meeting has been completed. They have thirty-four petitions. No pending Michigan tax tribunal appeals. Any new 2023 appeals need to be turned into the MTT by July 31st and commercial appeals by May 31st. And then the 2023 assessment rolls complete. The information's been exported to the state reports and equalization reports, which include the L 4022, L 423, L, L 4021, and L 4037. One pending STC State Tax Commission taxable value appeal for forty-two fifty-one Monroe Road.
Okay, thank you. All right, next.
Chris has a question.
I'm sorry?
Chris.
Oh, yeah.
Regarding the board of review, when are the determinations made available from that? I've been checking the website for minutes and I haven't seen anything.
They were mailed yesterday, and the minutes were published on the website today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Isn't that forty-two fifty-one? She already went to the board, to the, so what's she doing now?
I don't know. I was wondering the same thing when I saw that. It might be a typo, too, because she was on vacation.
Chris has already appealed it, right?
Yes.
Yeah. She already got, she already received. I'll ask her about that on Monday. I'll send you guys an update.
Okay, thank you. All right, Rhodes is next. Just wanted to tell you that Row Engineering has been selected for the Lutz Road traffic study that the road commission put out, so that will be ongoing. From the Mance meeting, just to tell you that US 10 from Euclid and Bay City to Seven Mile Road in Auburn will be reconstructed from the ground up. Yeah, so avoid US 10. From Euclid Road in Bay City to Seven Mile Road in Auburn.
Both ways?
No, just westbound.
They're gonna tear the whole?
They're gonna tear it right from the ground up.
US 10?
US 10.
Oh, my God.
And it's, what they're gonna do is make US 10 a one-way road, one lane on either side. And, yeah, and it's going to be from April, mid-April, until October, the end of October. So all summer long, the entire construction season, that entire stretch will be out of commission. So it'll be just two lanes of US 10, that's it.
Maria, are they going to widen that by chance?
Uh, yes, they're gonna add extra shoulder to it, and they're just gonna make it two lanes, though. There's not room to, yeah, there's not room to do three.
Is there any update, any update by chance on the full interchange of Waldo?
No, there is nothing. They, we talked about it at the meeting. What we're looking for now is, the road commission is going to the legislators to try to get support from them. So Debbie Stabina, Dan Kildee, all the federal, so that we can get some federal dollars thrown at it. The problem is, is that we have to get interest from MDOT on it. So the residents, we have to create some, some noise to get some notice. Because right now, the last thing I have on here is the road commission. Oh, Garfield Interchange is slated to be rebuilt in 2029. So they're paying attention to that, that one, and they're not paying any attention to us right now.
I know we had that survey a couple of years ago.
Right.
If there's a way to make noise, I'm in.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to the road commission on how they wanna, how they want us to go about it. But I think letters to the, to the senators and to our House of Representatives, that's what they're after right now. I'll make sure that, there's a meeting on Thursday, and I'll make sure to ask about that then.
Thank you.
Because, you know, like right now, with the, the mess that we've got going on on Eastman Road and Whackerly, if we had that, we could alleviate all that, that traffic jam there, but we can't, so, yeah. All right, Waldo Road overlay project will be from the city limits to the intersection of Waldo and Monroe. There will be a May letting, so the completion will be between, by early June. So that's just an overlay, so that'll be like maybe a week-long project. That won't be a real long project. The Waldo Roundabout will be let for bids in June of 2023, with construction to begin at the end of June or early July. Okay? Eastman Road, they're going to start, I think, mid-July to be able to have Eastman Road done, but that is a long project, probably two to three months. So that will be.
And what section of that is it?
From Meyer all the way to Monroe.
Are they going to do that so that that's not being done at the same time as Waldo?
No. That would be silly, Chris. I asked that question.
I'm thinking I'm going to Bay City. I'm just gonna drive.
Yeah, yeah. I asked that question, and they said that it's a matter of funding, when they can get the federal funds. And unfortunately, because of all the problems that we had with the roundabout and the property on the corner and that sort of thing, that pushed that back a year. We should've gotten it done last year, and that would've alleviated all those problems. But because of the federal funding, we have to use them up before a certain date. And that's why they're going ahead and doing all of this stuff. Then the Bay Metro bus used to come over to Midland. They would take people who worked in Bay City and drop them off at the Washington Center there where the DHS is. They used to do that. Now, because they are avoiding the Toll Bridge, it's added forty-five minutes to their route, so they've discontinued dropping people off from Bay County to Midland County. Dial-A-Ride is working with Bay Metro to try to figure out a solution, you know, like, maybe can we meet you on the, like, Bay Valley or something like that? Can we meet you and then just go on from there? At this point, they have not worked that out. At that last meeting, they had not worked it out. The other thing, the Garfield Interchange is slated to be rebuilt in 2029. And if anyone is interested, the state of Michigan is offering grants for electric vehicle charging stations. So, yeah, they will not cover the entire cost. Unfortunately, the grant will not cover the entire cost. They'll cover about half of it. So if anyone is interested in, in building a EV station, charging station, that we can apply for a grant anytime. All right, Monroe from Eastman is slated to have construction from twenty, in 2025. So from Eastman Road to Sturgeon Road, that's, that stretch by City Forest, that will be completely rebuilt as well.
From the ground up?
I'm sorry?
From the ground up?
I don't know about the ground up, but they're gonna rebuild it. It'll be like Eastman Road, so probably from the ground up, yes. I don't know that for sure. All right?
Is the culvert that the Drain Commission was talking about, is that the one on Monroe where, where they now had to move their stuff?
Yes, that's the culvert. That's the one thing that they have to finish yet. And there's some restoration that they have to do yet, too. Okay? I don't have anything else. Is there anything else anybody wants to talk about? Chris?
Um, I like the start of the meeting being at six. I'd like to submit that for consideration.
Oh, I love that. I love that idea. Anybody else okay with that?
Are we voting?
Yes, we, we can vote about it.
I like it.
Kathy, what do you want to vote?
Mine's me.
Jill and Dan, you guys work? Do you, it's okay?
The rest of you don't work?
Yeah, no, I mean, you have a, you work, you work late. No, I don't work, I'm.
I, I do.
Okay, your schedule a little low. How about you, Karen?
Karen.
Yeah.
No, Karen doesn't work.
You might want to switch over a bit.
You're within arm's reach of her. All right, so do we have a motion to start the meetings at six o'clock instead of seven?
No, we already approved all our meetings starting at seven. Do we need to change something?
Yeah, we'd have to change that entire schedule.
Todd's gonna make that motion. We need to put that all over the place so that we don't get trolled.
Yes.
I'll make that motion, put my name on it.
All right.
I'll second, because that means I get to go home, I guess.
Yeah. Motion by Todd, supported by Lisa, to start the board meetings at six A, six AM. Actually, it'd be good for me, but.
That's a hard task.
At six PM instead of seven, to change the time to six PM. Okay? Further discussion?
I'll vote yes, as, as long as you say it's not gonna be a four-hour meeting.
That'll give us lots more time to talk.
There is a limit, right? There, I mean, there's like a law that it can only be till Monday.
Oh, I will be, I will be, yes.
There's no, we get a fee break.
Although tonight I thought I had recorded.
Yeah, yeah. At some point, it doesn't come productive.
Oh, I do, too. I do, too.
All right, voting? Voting. Kathy?
Yes.
Lisa, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Send us a reminder.
Yeah, send us a reminder, because that's good. And we'll put it out on everything that we can possibly put it out on several times to remind everybody, so that we, yeah.
Don't get trolled.
Yeah, okay. All right, further discussion? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, Andrew.